Well, we'll go ahead and call the meeting. Dora, I'm going to do this without Zoom because we're here in person anyway, so I should be able to do that. If you would join me and with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Now, if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam, click if you'd call the roll.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Is here attending from my residence in Brighton Township for medical reasons.
Commissioner Reader.
Here.
Commissioner Helserman. Commissioner Dreck.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Present.
And Commissioner Zajak is absent. A quorum is present.
Item five on the agenda is correspondence. We have no correspondence for the evening, so we'll move on to item number six on the agenda, which is our first call to public. Anybody wishing to address the board this evening has three minutes. Alls we asked is you state your name and address before starting. I'll be the official timekeeper. I will inform you. I'll say you have 15 seconds left when you have 15 seconds left. And just a reminder, this is your opportunity to address the board. It's not intended to be a dialogue. It's your opportunity to present whatever you feel is important and of interest to the citizens of our county. So we will start by asking if anybody in the room here would like to address the Board of Commissioners, please raise your hand and say, lady here.
Do I have to say my address or can I say just where I'm at?
You could say what township you're at.
Hi, my name is Kelly Uphouse. I am in Brighton Township. My kids attend Brighton Public Schools. There's a couple of things I'd like to ask you really quickly. One is about Resolution 8, 2021, 8-130. I'd like some clarification on the citizen-enabled broadband data collection. As far as I'm concerned, I am concerned about data collection because my data is my data. So I'd like a little more clarification on that subject, if you guys wouldn't mind when you get to that point tonight. Also, I'd like to know who in Resolution 2021-08131 is the organization that would represent the IT department? How do we fund them and are they a private company? So when you get to that point again, I'll be listening to hopefully get those questions answered. So I'd like to address one thing, and that is the Michigan Health Department. And I'd like to personally address Commissioner Smith because he would be my representative for my district. But this also would apply to, I think, a whole of Livingston County, and I have a group of other districts here with us that I think feel interested in this as well. I'd like to formally request from our representatives to obtain the data on the co-costulate for the breakdown and isolation of SARS-CoV-2 virus so that we can actually prove without a doubt that there is a virus under this pandemic. I would like to know that what we are working with from a standpoint of mental health that has severely affected our kids for the last year with the edicts that has been brought down from the Health Department, who is not a representative of us because we didn't elect them. I would like to know if anybody here supports that.
Definitely.
Okay. So with that being said, I would like to also know why the edicts of the Health Department, which they take from the CDC, who is funded by corporations and also funded by private entities and groups that are not elected citizens or not elected people, to be able to make those edicts to us. So if we can isolate it, if we can show everybody that this is a real deal thing and we're not making things up, that would be great because I know I'm not alone and feeling like everybody's crazy. The rules keep changing, masks keep changing, vaccines are becoming an issue between parents, and there's a lot of tension. And I'd like to smooth that tension by being able to provide our citizens a true, clear path forward with actual data from the Health Department. And that would be the co-costulate of SARS-CoV-2.
You have 15 seconds.
If I could please ask you, Mr. Smith, to, because I did notice that you are also in charge of public health, to request that from the state Health Department, that would be lovely. And I thank you for your time. Thank you for being here today.
Anybody else? Yes.
I live at 7377 Munson Road in Hall, Michigan, which is a rural community. It's your district. And I'd like to show you what I picked up on my road. So I did the 3:30. And if I come back here in two months, three months, we're going to have all this again. And if you guys want to see it too. And they're throwing all their garbage stuff. They don't get caught by the police. I just took it on Friday. This was a newer one. You can see it's not that dirty. And I'm concerned for the rural residents of Livingston County.
Township such as, I should probably sit down. Rural townships such as Iasco, Onadilla, and Cahacta are not receiving equal protection from our sheriffs. In 2008, during the recession, there was a funding cut that restructured to where rural townships have to pay for to have the sheriff there. And I don't feel that the sheriff is out there as much as they can be because the bigger city centers such as Hall, Brighton, and Heartland get like 50% of the sheriff's time, while the rest of Livingston County gets their time. And also, those big cities have local police policing their cities for safety. We don't have that. A press release, as you'll see, I did give you guys all a handout from the Michigan Office of Highway and Safety. States alcoholic fatalities have increased from 295 to 326 in 2020. Less people were driving in 2020 due to the pandemic, but more of them seem to be under the influence. And I also noted that I found from the southeastern Michigan Council of Government that in 2008, our population in Livingston County was 156,000 roughly. So when that decision to take away policing of the sheriff so much from the rural townships, that was our population. But really, in 2010, which is two years from maybe that when that decision was made, there was 180,000 people in our township or in our county, and we are headed to 193,000 for 2020. And I noticed the spending from 2010 to 20, was to last year, 2020, the spending for policing, according to Semcog, was 22 to 27 million. And for 2021, we're slated for 20 million on spending. You've got a bigger population and you have less money that you're going towards policing. And you have, this is evidence of what's going on in the rural townships. It's quiet out there. People think they can get away with this stuff. And there's, you know, this is dangerous. It's dangerous for pedestrians.
You have 15 seconds.
It's dangerous for other motorists. I walk my road for exercise. I don't want to get nailed by somebody who's drunk. Or, and we haven't even mentioned about the legalization of marijuana, and the opioid epidemic is still going strong. That's it. Thank you very much.
And anybody else? Yes.
My name is Sherri LaRue, and I'm in Green Oak Township. Commissioner Plank takes care of Green Oak. I want to say thanks for giving us the opportunity in this time, but I want to piggyback off of the COVID situation that I found to be a little bit concerning. On August 2nd, the General Government Health and Human Services Committee met, and they put together some information and resolutions, proposed resolutions regarding accepting money from the state to provide various services through the Livingston County Health Department. My concern is, and I quote this from the documents that are available online today, but to immunize, conduct testing, tracing, case investigations, infection prevention, and enforcement for COVID-19 pandemic in Livingston County. As an image bearer of God, I have certain rights given to me by that, by my God. And those rights are upheld by the Constitution for U.S. and Michigan. And I believe that any infringement on my health and my healthcare choices via contact tracing and such is just unconstitutional. It's flat out an invasion of people's privacy. This particular proposal was broken down into monetary amounts in three sections. One chunk of money, 917,000, to be exact, for vaccination events. Now, again, if you want the vaccine, get the vaccine. But do we have to have an event for it? Go to the doctor. You, I think, get it at CVS, too. But yeah. But what was concerning here, letter from the Department of Health and Human Services, state of Michigan, funds are allowable only for activities and personnel costs directly related to the immunization and vaccines for children. Cooperative agreement for children. Now, you've stomped on parental rights and the right of every parent in this county to make those decisions for their children. That's the bulk of the money. We've got 516,000, and I'm rounding.
You have about 15 seconds.
Thank you. To focus on testing, tracing, case investigations, infection prevention, and wraparound services. I want to know what the definition of wraparound services is. And it says it's going to support isolation and quarantine for families. I'm done. I heard the beep. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining. Anybody else in the room wishing to address Jason?
Thank you, Board of Commissioners. I appreciate it. My name's Jase Ringette. I agree with what Kelly said over there about the Health Department. Just let you know, wasn't planning on talking, but since we're here, I will. Here we go again. First of all, the CDC World Health Organization has been wrong on so many levels, given misinformation across the world within the last year and a half. Dr. Fauci has flip-flopped on so many issues, no different than the Michigan weather changes on an hourly or daily basis. It's to the point now that it's laughable what Dr. Fauci and the CDC says about the science, really because they don't follow the science. Dr. Fauci is being sued by over 1,000 doctors to prove masks work. Let's get the Health Department to show masks work because they can't prove it. Dr. Fauci is being sued by over 1,000 doctors. He has no science to prove that masks work. Anytime that any other doctor or doctors give a different opinion, different than CDC's opinion, they get attacked and labeled quacks. The CDC setting guidelines on what the public should be thinking. The CDC's record on the COVID-19 has been really poor. Misrepresentation of mask lies and outdoor transmission example. The CDC misled the public when it announced less than 10% of the COVID-19 transmissions happened outdoors. The real number seems to be 1%, might even be below 0.1% to see the technical truth. The creator of the PCR test said in his video, "The PCR test was never designed to pick up the COVID-19 virus." The WHO organization had the PCR test calibrated at 37 to 40 cycles that picks up dead mRNA. On January 20, 2021, when the Biden administration came, the WHO organization dropped the PCR test cycles down to 28 cycles, which gives out a 97% false positives, false negatives. The PCR test isn't a true test. It is a faulty test. How can you tell if someone has COVID-19? You can't. The CDC keeps saying, trust the science. The CDC cannot produce any evidence that masks work. Dr. Reiner Fullmich with lawyers and the medical experts are suing the CDC and the WHO organization over the COVID-19 fraud, crimes against humanity. Researchers in Britain are calling for the halt of COVID trial jab because of the dangerous side effects and which raises doubts and concerns for the Chinese coronavirus. The doctors in England want these COVID vaccines stopped. There's more than enough COVID vaccine evidence that shows that these vaccines are unsafe for humans and the side effects that COVID vaccines bleed and clotting, immune system reactions, unusual pain reaction, neurological actions, loss to sight, hearing, speech, smell, adverse reactions, pregnancy and miscarriages in women. The researchers explains the products in the vaccine are toxic to humans. They are called for immediate halt of these vaccines to investigate the harmful side effects. According to the Verz website, which is a U.S. government site, it tracks adverse reactions from the COVID vaccines. Nearly 6,000 people have died from taking the vaccine.
You have 15 seconds.
20,000 have been hospitalized, 2,000 came down with Bell's palsy. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Janine.
Hi, my name is Janine Ayer. I'm on Brighton Road in Genoa Township. I also want to agree with the others who are objecting to the funding or the acceptance of the COVID funding from the state. When you accept that money, you are basically giving the Health Department the money to enforce a biomedical police state, and that's not what our citizens want. So your website states that, states the following about the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. Quote, "The Livingston County Board of Commissioners is the chief policymaking body of county government." Since the VOC is the chief policymaking body, I conclude that this board is authorized to make policy, not just, quote, "hold the purse strings," as I have heard it said here. "You each took an oath of office to uphold the U.S. and state constitutions and federal and state laws." So I conclude that your chief job is to make policy that secures, strengthens, and applies the existing rights, liberties, and laws for the citizens of this county. That being the case, I have a resolution that I have proposed and I have emailed. That should be a no-brainer for you to adopt and agree. Commissioners, the human rights issue of the day is employers telling their employees that they will need to take the unapproved investigational COVID shot or else lose their job. There are colleges in our state that are telling their students that they will not be able to, or that they will need to take the unapproved investigational COVID shot or else not be able to finish their college education. I call on each of you to support this resolution to ban mandatory vaccination and vaccine passports in our county. Do not let the biomedical police state exist in Livingston County and not on our watch. Stand for the continuation of a free society in our community. We were born free Americans, and we want it to stay that way. We don't, we really didn't elect you to basically allow this to happen to the citizens of this county. So I have emailed the resolution. I don't know if I have time to read it, but I'll start. Whereas the emergency use authorization COVID-19 injections are unapproved investigational vaccines that are still in their experimental stage, and the United States Code of Federal Regulation require the informed consent of human subjects for medical research. And whereas, since all currently available COVID-19 vaccinations are authorized for emergency use only, they must remain voluntary under the Nuremberg Trial Codes. It is unlawful to conduct medical research on a human being. And I have some other whereas, but I sent it to the email, and I look forward to discussing it with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Hi. My name is Michelle Blandiel from Heartland. And I just want to make a statement and ask for, and also ask for something from all of you. I would like, we're all in support of each other. As you can see, we're starting to talk more and understand that we don't feel that giving up our constitutional rights for somebody else's fear or somebody else's help is something that we've even been asked about. So what I'm asking for all of you is that when all of this comes to you to sign anything into play, like for our schools, our children's, for vaccines, anything COVID-related, just know that there needs to be, put a stop to the fact that our rights are being trampled on because of other people's fear. And I just want you guys to recognize that not everybody feels the way that other people feel. So that's all. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Susan. I live in Green Oak Township, but I have a Brighton address. Brenda Plank, you are our representative. Thank you. I just want to thank you all for being here and taking the time to hear what we have to share with our concerns and to voice our feelings and thoughts about many aspects of current policies that are in place. And I'm just wanting to, again, reiterate and support what many of the people here this evening shared, specifically in regards to the upcoming proposal that the Finance Subcommittee is going to be determining. And that is in regards to the spending and the funding for all of these testing sites, the COVID vaccine sites, how it affects and impacts our children, all of those things. I am here to request that you not approve that proposal and that you give more time to the citizens of this county to share their thoughts and concerns regarding that, that you either table it or you flat out reject it so that we have an opportunity for more citizens to come forward to share their thoughts in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Deborah, right?
I'm from Brighton Township, new to the area. So I want to know why we're spending money on a PCR test that has been recalled. Why are we funding this when the CDC has already admitted that they cannot detect COVID in these tests? I don't understand why the funding would go to that. It doesn't make any logical sense to me. At best, this, what they're doing is invasive. At worst, it's controlling. We're a free people. We have God-given rights to freedom. It's our choice to mandate our own health. It's not the right of the government to tell us how we are supposed to take care of our bodies. I'm sure none of you up there would be okay with that, with me coming into your home and saying, no, you have to eat this. You cannot eat that. I'm going to slap that hamburger out of your mouth. That's just, it's invasive at worst, controlling. It's invasive at best, controlling at worst. It needs to stop. Please do not fund this. Thank you.
Deborah, could you provide your last name for the record? Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
I'm Nelson. I live in Fallerville. Am I allowed to come beyond the desk at all to show you something or no?
You would prefer to have a seat at the, and use the microphone.
I'm asking if I'm allowed to show you something on my phone.
Sure.
Okay. I had printed quite a few copies, but when I got to where I printed them from, they were still actually in the machine, so they didn't get printed. And I can't, I'm happy to email. You may have even seen these images before, but these are concerts. And I mean, I mean, there's just like thousands and thousands of people having concerts. And in the little picture is our kids in a classroom, maybe 30 kids in their class, and they're wearing masks. And so I'm also here as a parent of five daughters. I'm here because, several reasons, learning to say no about our bodies as a female and not to comply just because, just because we have to. No, we don't always have to comply. And there's several other things. So I would like for you to say no, no to all of that money, no. Because it trickles down, the Health Department. So our schools currently, they're saying they're not going to mask our children in the fall, but we're all just waiting for that to change. And if the Health Department goes through with all of this and then they start mandating or recommending or all these strong impulses coming from them, all these schools are starting to, okay, well, we better follow because we don't want to lose our funding, which apparently I've talked to people that would know that say they're not going to lose their funding, but they're scared. Our students are scared. My girls, we stopped wearing masks when we went out in public. I'm like, enough of this, enough. We don't want it on our face. We're not wearing it. It's not your job, my little five-year, she's not even five yet, to control the fear from somebody else. That's not her job. She's, she's still a baby, really, and to have to worry about protecting someone. Let me tell you this. My grandfather passed away in March, and we put him in a nursing home in July last year because his assisted living, it got too advanced, his care was declining. So we put him in a nursing home, and everything was shut down. I didn't get to see my grandfather to keep him safe at the nursing home. And then he died here in March, not of COVID. He was neglected, actually, and it's on file, and my family's going through a lawsuit because of the neglect. I also have pictures of businesses that are closing down. Our businesses can't do this. Our families, I have friends that own businesses, and they are struggling, whether they're almost on the verge of closing or they can't hire anybody because nobody wants to work. So, or they don't want to get sick or whatever. We don't want the vaccine if we haven't gotten it already. Like, it's out there everywhere. If I wanted it, I could have had it months ago. I don't want it. My kids are not getting it.
You have 15 seconds.
My husband doesn't want it. None of us want it, and it's all trickles down. And I will ask you this because I asked my board, our school, because it trickles down not only to our students but to our athletes. Have any of you put a mask on your face and taken a lap around this building with that mask on to see how that feels? And that's what we're asking of our students and our athletes in our schools every single day, and that's not right. Please say no to that money.
Krieg.
Yeah, Stephanie Krieg, Brighton, Michigan. I was here last week, and I listened to the Health Department gentleman who was speaking. And I remember you spoke up about the vaccine passport, Brenda, and you said, "If there's a vaccine passport, I will vote no." Well, just after you voted yes, that, this came out from Heartland Schools. It, and I'm reading what the letter says, and it says, let me pull it up. When I read it, individuals who are fully vaccinated are less likely to be excluded from attendance or school and within school programs. I don't know about you, but that sounds a whole lot like a vaccine passport to me. They're threatening you that if you don't get the vaccine, you will be excluded from programs. How is this not a vaccine passport and how is this not discrimination? Another thing I find very alarming is that this is going, the money goes until September of 2022, which means that we have a whole nother year of this, a whole nother year. After, like Jason said, they've already said the PCR test is being recalled. Alberta, Canada, they can't prove that the, they can't isolate the COVID-19. They just found out in court. They can't even isolated it. So we have to keep this rolling another year because that's when the money goes to? I'm not down with that. The other thing, the last thing, again, the compliance. We have to listen to the Health Department. They didn't do anything. They didn't do anything. Ask people in school. They were under the threat of the Health Department. So even if they are sitting up here and telling us that they're not going to do anything, that they're not going to enforce, that's not the image that they're portraying to the businesses. I went to several businesses. I said, "The Health Department said they won't do anything." Oh, you know, they will lose our liquor license. We'll do this, we'll do that. So for them just to sit up here and say, "We're not going to do anything," it's not resonating with the community. And again, it's unconstitutional. $1.5 million, again, like Christina said, if I wanted the shot, CVS, Walmart, you can go anywhere now and get the shot. So what are we going to do with $1 million in shots that people don't want? Where are these going? Are these going to our kids? The Health Department began and said, "No, they weren't going to go to our kids." But guess what Heartland did the very next day? Rolled out a vaccine clinic the very next day. So for him to sit up here and say all that and sleep at night, I don't know how he does, but God will judge him. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address the board? Yes, sir.
Ken Youngman from South Lyon, Michigan. And I just want to say, don't take the money. If you take the money, you're going to be under obligation to do what the state wants you to do. You're going to enter into a contract, right? If you take that money? And if you do... do, you will have to do what the state is going to ask you to do. And the state has already demonstrated that they are tyrannical. They have used the COVID virus to perform or implement many tyrannical actions that have hurt this community and have hurt our children. And so I'm just saying, please don't take the money. Don't enter into a contract with a state which has demonstrated tyranny.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Alisa Davis. I live in Brighton. I don't think I can ask questions to you, can I? This is my first time here, right? No? Wishful thinking? So I'm going to ask you not to take the money. By taking the money, you're going to lock yourself in on a situation where this virus has not been isolated. Nobody even knows what this really is, if it even is something. So by taking this money, you fall prey and under the thumbs of the state, like that nice gentleman was saying. Then you become their, you know, their puppet. I would ask that you wait before you not only lock yourselves in, but us as well and our children. Please wait. They say, trust the science. Show us the science first. Show us where the virus has been isolated. And then we can talk. But until that moment comes, everybody is just believing theories. I have children, I have children in these, in Brighton High School. And I am seriously considering pulling her out all because of this. And I know I'm not the only one. And I love that school. They're very good. They're very patient. They're very kind. But they're not perfect. And neither are the people who are giving us this narrative that there's a pandemic out there. If it were a true pandemic, the majority of us would have seen something that would have scared us from coming here and asking you not to do this. So maybe pray on it a little bit, maybe take some quiet time and really think about the ripple effect that you're having over really very innocent people. It's heartbreaking to watch this madness go on and witness what money can purchase. This is our freedom that's being bought. And my father raised me differently. And he taught us the Constitution. So I know part of what's going on here is unconstitutional. And that little document sits over all of our heads. And none of us want this to get worse.
Yeah, 15 seconds.
We don't want it to get worse. So we're here respectfully requesting that you please think this through, that you please look at the data. Show us where the virus has been isolated. And then we can talk. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room wishing to address the board? Not seeing any. So we'll go to Zoom. If Cindy Katnick can scan the room for me, I'd appreciate it. A Zoom room.
Commissioner, I am not seeing any hands raised.
All right. I will go ahead and close the call to the public and remind citizens that there's a second call to the public at the, at the end of the meeting. Item number seven on the agenda is approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes dated. One said July 26th, the other set dated August 4th. Looking for a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Motion to approve both sets of minutes. Griffith?
Support Gross.
Motion, motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Gross. Any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of approving both sets of minutes signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Item number eight is tabled items from previous meeting. We have no tabled items. So we'll move on to item number nine is approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move Helsner.
Support Reader.
Motion to approve the agenda by Commissioner Helsner, support by Commissioner Reader. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? We have an agenda. Item number 10, our reports. Do we have any reports from commissioners this evening?
Chairman.
Commissioner Gross.
My wife and I had the opportunity to attend the Family Emergency Readiness Expo at Crystal Gardens yesterday. And I want to commend Commissioner Drick and his colleagues for putting on a wonderful event. And Livingston County was very well representative, represented there. Sheriff Murphy, Under Sheriff Water, and there are several of their deputies were there. Adam Baransky from Letts was there. EMS was represented by one of their relatively new ambulances with the new paint job. The Health Department was there doing COVID testing and giving shots. And there was many other speakers and booths, exhibitors. And I thought it was a well-run event. And I wanted to thank Commissioner Drick and his colleagues.
Thank you. Any other reports from commissioners? Commissioner Griffith?
Just a reminder that United Way Day of Caring is Wednesday. It's a great time for volunteers, if you have time, to go and help volunteer residents who can't help themselves. So keep that in mind. It's Wednesday all day.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? I, I want to go ahead and report on something. The, as many know, I've been a very vocal advocate against critical race theory. It is, it was an article published in the Washington Free Beacon. It's a right-leaning organization elaborating on something that's going on here in Livingston County. The, so they, they had reported that the Livingston Diversity Council, based here in Livingston County, had content up there in support of critical race theory. That was a surprise to me. I, I never went to the website, but I, I did and I saw the content. I also found it interesting that the director, the district, the county representative for Congresswoman Slotkin was, is part of the diversity council. And under her, under her name was text that said she's part of Slotkin's staff. Well, that has since changed. It now says civic leader. There's no reference to the Congresswoman. I, I think that speaks volumes on how toxic and wrong that policy is of, of saying that if you have lighter skin color, you are privileged, or if you, or all of the United States is institutionally racist. Those, those statements are in fact racist. I also found it interesting because I observed the before and after screenshots that there was a superintendent of one of the school districts here in Livingston County. His picture used to be up there, but now after the exposure and what this organization is promoting, his picture is no longer there. I think that's a good thing. I think that's a great thing and it's a step in the right direction. I will continue to strongly oppose this critical race theory stuff. It is the, it is dividing our country along racial lines. It's not needed. It's not correct. And anyway, I just wanted to say it was encouraging to me to see this article. It'll be, I'll be surprised if, if it gets reported on locally. So that's why I'm speaking of it tonight. So with that being said, I will close the reports and move on to item number 11, which is approval of consent agenda items. We have resolutions 2021-08-123 through 2021-08-134. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move Gross. Support Helsner.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Helsner. Are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Adam Clerk.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Zajak is absent. And Commissioner Griffith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number 12, our resolutions for consideration. We have no resolutions for consideration this evening. So we'll move on to the second and final call to the public. Just as a reminder, anybody wishing to speak has three minutes. As we ask is you provide your name and address prior to speaking. Are there, is there anybody here in the room? Yes?
Again, my name is Sherri Theberg. I'm from Green Oak Township. I'm not sure the protocol, but I have one of these for each of you.
Go ahead. That would be fine.
So what you are looking at here.
Thank you.
Is a piece of an analysis done by the name by a man named Seth Teschel. He is great at analytics and historical type things. And what this refers to is full forensic audit.
Mr. Helsner, man, I heard you at the last meeting. I wasn't here, but I watched the video. I heard you talk about audit. I was very sad that nobody was here to address that. Okay. But this data that I just handed out, it reveals how many counties in Michigan, including Livingston County, had statistical concerns that really require further examination. Now, my, my credentials as a tax and financial planning specialist hopefully will provide you an easy to understand overview here. In the investment world, we have a saying that says past performance does not guarantee future results. Right? You've all heard that. But in Seth's analysis, he's looking at the historical data, the past performance. And in the financial world, we do that. And then we apply a Monte Carlo simulation to say, okay, based on this historical thing, if X happens, this is what the result will be. If Y happens, this is what the result will be. And so when Seth comes out and says Livingston County is of concern, it's based on that process. What is a full forensic audit? I want to tell you that it's not a recount. Okay? Again, tax background. In a recount, ballots are counted and the count needs to match what was reported in the electronic equipment. Okay? A full forensic audit, very much like an IRS audit, says, all right, well, wait a minute. Let's take a look at these ballots. Are they valid? And then it proceeds to put aside those that are found to be invalid. The tabulators are then examined. Were the settings correct on them? Were they interfered with during the election process? All of that we take into consideration. So a full forensic audit of this county is going to, is going to send us down two paths. It's going to say to us, the 2020 election results were indeed correct, at which point voter confidence is restored and we move on. But if it's found to be inaccurate, we're going to go down a dark path. We're going to go down uncharted waters. And I encourage you guys to be brave. Travel this path with me and so many others. And let's search for the truth.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Yes?
Hi, again. Ellie Up House, Brighton Township. So I, I think that my first request of, of asking for the isolate would dispel quite a bit of any kind of issues in this county completely. I also want to let you guys know that I moved here because I fell in love with Livingston County. I moved here because my daughter was in a school district where she was treated poorly. She got into a group with kids that were not a healthy group of kids to be around. She found at Brighton High School a home. She found a direction. She's in college and she's getting ready to graduate to be a teacher. And after what she's seen this year, she doesn't want to be a teacher anymore. And she wanted to be a teacher for all the right reasons. Masking our kids, doing this to our community, it's tearing us apart. We have parents outing parents and parents sending hateful letters to us. This is horrible. All of this can be fixed by asking the Health Department, who is taking edicts from a company that is funded by corporations who have put people out of business in our state. I'm a business owner. I've been affected by this. This is not okay. And I'm asking you, please, please protect us. That's what we've hired you or elected you to. Protect us and our kids. Be the change. Please be the change. Because if you guys start the change, I guarantee you, other places will follow, other counties will follow. This state needs someone to stand for us. And right now, none of us like we're being stood up for. My daughter's fighting in school because she can't take the gene therapy injection because she has hemoglobin issues. Her school's targeting her. She has teachers targeting her. What are we doing? I just, I'm sorry, I'm so emotional, but this is, we moved here because we love this place. And I want, I want to continue loving this place. And I want my little boy to grow up feeling like he's a part of a community that cares. And I thought we had that this last year. I have not felt that way. And I know I'm not alone. And I know there's a lot of people that aren't willing to put their face out there, but they feel the same way I do. So please, I'm just begging you, request that information before any decisions are made. And that is going to speak volumes for all things, the audits that are really necessary. What's going on with our schools? Taking money from the Health Department? These are all really important things that are going to affect our future. And I want to be the right path. I want to be a shining beacon. Please, I'm begging. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
Hi, my name's Karen B. Sewell. I live in Brighton. I wasn't, I didn't think I would speak tonight, so excuse my, my quivering voice. You are not alone. I too moved with my family out to Brighton a couple of years ago. We used to live in Oakland County and I felt like it was getting really nutty there. So we moved to Livingston County thinking we'd be among people that, for lack of a better term, made more progressive and just looking for more of a conservative area to live. And we thought, we found our home here. And then COVID hit. And I have never, in all my life, seen so many changes in such a short period of time. The things we're being asked to do now, get the vaccine mask, kick people out of your businesses. The, the world has changed so much in the last six months and it's changed too quickly. I have a son who is in college. He has an autoimmune disorder. And so he too will be singled out. If someone does get COVID, I'm sure they will point the finger at him. The madness has to stop. And I too ask you to, in my opinion, The madness has to stop, and I too ask you to, in my opinion, do what's right, and let's get back to some normalcy, especially for the kids. As retired social worker, I'm very concerned about the kids these days and the effect that this will have on them. Kids need normalcy, and they need adults to lead the way and protect them and bring them safety and security. And these masks are not doing that for kids. Thank you.
Anybody else? I would like to speak. There was, yes, come on up.
My name is Gina McSweeney. I live in the, in downtown Brighton. I am in support of a full forensic audit. I've talked to my representatives. It has been, I've, I've been told to my face that they feel like everything has been done, it has been audited correctly. It has not. I follow Captain Seth Keschel as well, who served our military. He's a cyber analyst for our government, military. Very, he's been on top of every county. Livingston County has had issues. I worked with Livingston County Republican Party. We were called to go down to TCF Building the morning of November 4th. I was part of two carloads of women, including my friend that just spoke, went down there and witnessed everything. We had police holding us out of being able to enter the building to do what we were asked to do, and it's to oversee whatever we were called to do. It was mayhem. We saw, we, we all stayed up and watched November 3rd. Water main breaks, audits, you know, I mean, counts being shut down, states being called early, they're waiting on other states for whatever. It was very mysterious. I'm 54 years old. I've never experienced anything like that. And whoever, my representatives telling me that everything was normal is a lie, because they're at least my age. Full forensic audit would get to the bottom of it. If there's something to hide, you don't want it. This is what I'm finding. If you want to know truth, we will seek truth and do a full forensic audit. And Livingston County, according to Captain Seth Keschel and many others, there is discrepancies. And I think that we should lead the way and champion our state and look for truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else before Commissioner Helsner? You just want a comfortable chair, that's why.
How y'all doing? So I think as I listen to everyone, we're looking for that trust back. And in conducting a full forensic audit, we understand that the recounts are just recounts. We understand that the data is out there. It really does show severe abnormalities. There you go, big word. And because all of this data exists, and because the trust is waning, this is the way, if there's nothing to hide, then there's nothing to hide. If it's the money, the money is in buckets, sitting at the state for these full forensic audits. And there are offers out there by people that know how to do these and have done these in Arizona, and they're willing to charge only 25 cents per ballot. And if it really comes down to the money, I'll bet you, we would be pretty willing to go out there and do a fundraiser. I bake some pretty mean cookies. So we would like to see this, not to flip the results, just to reassure us that the results that you gave us, they're true. Then we can go home and we can go to sleep at night and go, wow, our election system really does work. But if the other comes out and we find out, wow, these processes and procedures are broken, then at least we have some sort of foundation to stand on and say, where do we begin to put the integrity back into this county, back into this state? And I know that's a, when you go to state level, I know that that's, there's a lot of broken things there. But we're here, because it's small enough, this is your true grassroots. And we're here willing, whatever it would take, we would help. And we would really like to see those results, because we really do like Livingston County, and we really don't want to leave. I'm from Genesee County, and it's beautiful up there. And the things that I see going on down here right now, it's very tempting to go back. My daughter is a senior this year.
You have 15 seconds.
So help us stay. Help us help you. And please, let's get this trust back. And thank you for your time.
Anybody else? Yes, yes.
Hi, my name is Christina. I'm from Brighton. So obviously, we're in a room full of people. It seemed to be pretty unanimous here. I support everything, every topic that people have brought up regarding accepting money for COVID regulations and restrictions that we all feel are pretty unconstitutional. And I think even regarding election integrity and looking into that, this all boils down to what our country was founded on. So I think that I can speak for myself when I say I agree with all the topics brought up here today. And I just want to encourage you guys to stand up for what's right, stand up for the things that our country was founded on, and stand up for truth. I know that it can be easy to be in your positions, and it's easy for us, even in our positions, to look at all the problems and all of the forces fighting against us and fighting against our rights and just feel completely helpless. But we're not helpless. This country was started by people who did small things to make a difference, and big things start small. And you have the power to help us make a big move in that way. And that's all I have to say.
Christina, could you provide your last name for the record?
Sorry?
Your last name?
Novoa.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Helsner?
In trying times, and there have been a lot of trying times in my lifetime that I thought were pretty big. I tried to read books that encapsulate what is happening and what are solid responses. And one book that I've come across recently that I would just speak for is American Marxism by Mark Levin. It's a very good book. I just ask you to, if you're interested in finding some solutions for our country, that would be a good book for you to, to look at. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody out in Zoom land that would wish to address the board, please indicate so by either waving at us or using your Zoom raise your hand feature? I'm not seeing anybody.
Got a quiet group out here in Zoom land. No hands raised.
All righty. I'm going to go ahead and close the call to the public, and thank everybody for coming out and sharing your thoughts with us. And now I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So move Helsner.
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Helsner, and support by Commissioner Griffith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.